We'd have to have that in every meter in the city. We started off down that road and it just didn't pencil out, so.
When you say automate, can you define that? What do you mean? Is that like using a parking app?
It's like remote reads. Theoretically, you could drive a bus around the different neighborhoods and pick up all the readings for the meters and collect that data and send it to our billing department.
Oh, slick.
Or a street sweeper or any number of.
But that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for that update, that clarification. Maybe we can talk more about that at the next point, at the next juncture. Any councilor concerns?
Your honor? I just wanted to just mention that I've had conversation with Ms. Troha about some concerns that citizens have voiced to me about some of the streetlights on French Prairie and Charbonneau that are out. And I appreciate that. There are a number of them that were, I mean, literally damaged to the degree that they're hanging from the ice storm. And just so our citizens are aware as well, that the city has had communication with PGE and they are aware of the situation. And so they're working toward getting all of those repaired as soon as possible, so.
Great. Councilman?
This just occurred to me with a couple of intersecting conversations, but with regards to our vacant lot at Town Center, if that's going to be vacant for still another couple of years, probably, is there a way that we might consider that as pollinator habitat? You know, that's a low maintenance, you know, I don't know, plant clover or, you know, a cover crop, so to speak, but that is pollinator friendly? That could be a demonstration? Put a little sign, say this is pollinator habitat or something like that?
It's on my list to follow up with staff. If that's something the council would like us to investigate, I certainly can. I can't imagine it would cost a lot of money to... We already have a demonstration garden over here that we could just.
Yeah, we've been doing them different places, but that would seem like a good place to do it in that, you know, we're not doing a lawn or irrigation or any of those things right now because that's down the road.
I can talk to staff, figure out what we could do there.
Great. Anything else? Okay. With that, we'll move to the pre-council work session. And first up is the IGA with Sherwood, the Wilsonville River Water Treatment Plant Expansion.
Hello, council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Before you is Resolution 2907 authorizing intergovernmental agreement with the City of Sherwood to partner in the Willamette River Water Treatment Plant Expansion. The 2017 master plan for the facility identified a need for a 5 million gallon a day capacity expansion to accommodate growth in both cities. And the terms of the IGA would have this capacity and the cost of the project shared, two-thirds by Wilsonville and one-third by Sherwood. The Sherwood City Council did approve this intergovernmental agreement just last month at their council meeting. And the intent to complete the project is to use a CMGC, alternative contracting method, which council approved in March of last year. And council also did approve the design contract with StanTech in July of last year. So that design is well underway at about 60% complete. And we are also in process of selecting the CMGC. And our intent is to have that selection ready to submit to council in the second meeting in August. And once that CMGC contractor is hired, we intend to begin construction early next year and have construction complete by the end of the following year. That's just an overview of the project itself and where the IGA fits in. If you have any questions?
Mike Nicrelli.
Yes, Senior Civil Engineer, Project Manager. Sorry.
That is a huge project that's been underway for a long time. And I know we have some updates on that. A lot of detail people can read on our website to find out more about that.
Well, there is a concurrent project happening. The Willamette Water Supply Program is constructing the raw water facilities. That is actually separate from this project. We're going to be expanding our own treatment plant just for Sherwood and Wilsonville. So it'll be at the same site, but totally separate project.
A lot going on there.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions?
This is the time because this is on consent.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, council.
And next we have the Bus on Shoulder report.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Dwight Burchier. I am the Transit Director for SMART. Joining me this evening is my SMART colleague, and I use the word SMART as an adjective, Eric Loomis. He is the Operations Manager. And tonight, we're excited to share with you kind of a high-level view of a bus-on-shoulder project that we are fortunate to be involved in with ODOT. Back probably four years ago when I joined the City of Wilsonville, I was at a J-PAC meeting and we started to, Nancy Crushhour and myself and others started to have a conversation about bus-on-shoulder. And at that time, we didn't realize that we could see it become a reality as quickly as it appears to be. And so we have been meeting with ODOT on a regular basis. And we're going to, Eric is going to lead us through a presentation this evening. And I think back to a conversation I had with Congressman Schrader some months ago. And he says, Dwight, he said, "One thing I like about SMART is you guys are always fighting above your weight class." And this is absolutely true. And we will be the first transit agency in the state of Oregon to be allowed to operate on the shoulder of the interstate. And so that is huge. We will beat TriMet and Chariots and LTD and some of the others across the state. And so we are very proud of that. So with that, I will turn it over to my SMART colleague, Eric Loomis.
Thank you, Dwight. Good evening, Mayor, councilors. So what is bus-on-shoulder? Well, it's not a new concept nationally and internationally, but it is, as Dwight mentioned, a new concept for Oregon. And so one thing we've looked towards was CTRAN in Vancouver, Washington operates on shoulder. They've had a pilot program for about two years now. So we've looked at their program and the successes it's had and the speed bumps that they've hit, as well as ODOT has looked to their pilot program as well as Washington, DOT's information that they had. So bus-on-shoulder works on major arterial streets and freeways, such as what we're looking at for the Interstate 5 Pilot Program. When congestion gets heavy, particularly during commute times, or if there's an accident or other issues on the freeway, is when the shoulder becomes available for buses to operate. There's many restrictions around that that ODOT has created, primarily for safety features for the traveling public and our drivers and our customers. And so SMART has created our own standard operating procedures to coincide with ODOT's policies and procedures. So with that, here's a project timeline that we have. So the first few items on that timeline have already been worked through and finalized, permits approved by ODOT, performance measures. We've worked with ODOT to come up with some performance measures to work with them for this pilot year is what we're looking at for the pilot program, to measure the successes and differences pre and post pilot program. And then working with an MOU with the state. And then we've been periodically checking in with ODOT, and actually more than it shows on this particular map. We've been doing at least monthly check-ins with the ODOT team there. We've created our own SOPs and training protocols, as well as a policy manual for our drivers to follow and for the public to see and understand. We'll get that on the website here in the next few months. And then now we're waiting on construction of the I-5 corridor. You'll see that that's been going on for a couple of months now. That'll be finished by tentatively November 1st is when we're looking at to launch this operation. If you've had the opportunity to go along I-5 between Wilsonville and Tuolotin, you'll see some striping done. That's getting in preparation for a bus-on-shoulder and signage will soon follow that. And then in September or October, in September and October, ODOT as well as SMART will be launching a public campaign, outreach campaign for educating the public on what bus-on-shoulder really means. And I'll get into that here shortly.
Before you leave, that one, I think you lost an N in launches unless that's a Los Chays.
Oh, very well could have. Yeah, we make sure we get that.
Which would be a word I don't know.
Yeah, so SMART will launch the pilot program November 1st.
French spelling.
That's an ODOT document. So for operations, I mentioned ODOT's concept of operations. That gives a precursor to what traffic looked like prior to this project, what the expectations are. Any type of incidents and accidents that occur during bus-on-shoulder, if it's related to the bus-on-shoulder, will be reported to ODOT. And so many of those measurements that we'll do with the metrics there. For SMART, for example, our training protocols, once traffic gets to 35 miles per hour slower, that's when we'll be able to operate on the shoulder. And we won't be able to exceed those speed limits. So we'll be doing some training with drivers for a three-week period, or longer if necessary, through October in preparation for November 1 launch for that. So there's classroom safety training as well as on-the-road training. Because we can't determine when traffic will be slow during training, we will have a pilot car from our fleet department that will help us do some training on the shoulder, even if traffic is at higher speeds.
Can I ask you a quick question right there?
Yeah.
Is, so the bus will never go more than 35 miles an hour, or it has to keep pace with where traffic's at?
It will never go faster than 35 miles per hour on the shoulder.
So if they're inching along on I-5, the bus can at least go 35?
Correct. Yeah. Yeah. And ODOT, in their concept of operations, they have, as far as keeping the shoulder clean, free of debris, we have protocols if there's a broken-down vehicle or debris that we have to pull back into traffic. So that's all through the training process that we'll have.
Thank you.
Marketing. So ODOT has come up with a communications and education plan, a very robust plan, to educate the public, both on the I-5 corridor around the state as well as locally especially. And that's where SMART will come in as well. Michelle Marston has been working on some marketing material. And with that, you see the diagram here, ride bus-on-shoulder. That's part of our marketing campaign. And then the timeline for that, the July through October is that plan for the education and communication plan. So we'll really hit social media, news outlets in September and October, the Boon's Ferry Messenger, our Facebook pages and our website, of course, to let the public know that this is coming. We'll also do some tabling at some schools, library and different events as well around town. The bus wrap design. So we're really excited about this. We want these vehicles to be unique and be seen by the public. You can see the bright blue color. That's one of our SMART colors, but it's not the traditional green color. From our traditional wrap, you can see underneath there the two green arrows. So this will really differentiate the SMART vehicles from our current scheme. And then the back of the bus in the bottom right-hand corner there, you'll see the ride bus-on-shoulder do not follow. So that's an additional part of that marketing safety campaign to allow, to let traffic know, the traveling public to not follow the bus when the bus gets on the shoulder. So we've worked with ODOT on this design as well. And they're excited to use this in their marketing as well.
And this will be done by Gillespie locally.
Yeah.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that is a really great design. So ODOT's participating in the design?
We created the design. We showed it to ODOT and they were very happy with it.
And I was at the SMART facilities when Gillespie was putting on some of these labels. It's amazing how fast this has come along.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, some of the other labels before you got this.
Yeah, then I might add, this project has been moving very smoothly and fast with ODOT as a partner. And assuming that this project goes well for us, we're looking at the Interstate 205, I-205 for an additional pilot project to start next spring, hopefully or next summer.
Could you back up one slide, please?
Yeah.
I was going to say, and that project that he's talking about, I-205, is a partnership between Clackamas County, Washington County, Ride Connection and SMART. So it's those four partners in putting this thing together. So West Lynn wants it and Oregon City wants it. They're all trying to jump in on this thing. It's a good thing.
So I just wanted to take another minute on this calendar. So in October, will the public be able to participate? So in October, will the public be able to participate in the test runs, or is that still just a staff operation?
That'll be a staff only. That's a part of, so the media will allow them to come on the buses for those test runs, and then it's primarily driver training would be those test runs to...
And then, November 1st is when you could take regular passengers?
Correct. If the timeline works out correctly, and the only issue that potentially could prolong that would be if there was some construction materials backed up for construction to be complete. So I haven't heard the latest timeline, but we're still counting on a November 1 start date.
Thank you.
SMART will be ready. We're not sure if ODOT will be.
I have two questions. Can councilors go on your pilot runs and see what it's about? Is that okay?
Oh, absolutely. I think that's what it's...
Great transition to the next slide.
Okay.
That's what it's meant for. Yes, yes.
So, to answer your question, yes, we do have a tentative date set for Tuesday, October 26th, 12:00 p.m., if councilors are available. If not, we could always make that date a different time, but that's what we were working with at this point.
Right. And again, safety is our primary focus, so we will have a pilot vehicle out there on the shoulder. So regardless of what the traffic could be moving at a really good pace, the bus will enter the shoulder and exit the shoulder as it's supposed to, so that you can get a feel of what's going on.
Is part of the marketing plan to use those reader board signs to alert the traveling public that there's going to be a pilot project?
ODOT mentioned that they would be using those.
They would do that? Oh, good. I think that would be...
They've been an incredible partner in this effort, so can't say enough nice things about them right now.
Will this increase the number of trips that can go into the Portland area and streamline some of that getting closer into like, OHSU, OHSU?
Well, that'll be, you know, something Eric would look at.
Yeah, so this pilot program for the year, we won't change our operations, our times for that, our time plan. What it will do is make it more, the current schedule more reliable. Right now, we're detouring and having issues with schedule, and we thought with COVID, with COVID pandemic, that we saw lighter traffic and less delays. And we thought that might carry through until this starts, however, recently, we've been seeing those delays again already. So that's what this will help with during the pilot program. After that, we'll review and see what our schedules could look like if we could increase the frequency. However, this is a very narrow scope for this pilot program. It only goes to Tuolton. ODOT's been reviewing areas further north, but there are some big restrictions in shoulder width and whatnot.
Through the road course would be a little...
So I know I slowed you down a little bit, but I'm seeing we need to get back on timeline.
And that, this is the last slide. If there's any other questions, councilors have.
Fantastic. Any questions?
I asked online.
Great. Thank you.
You got it, okay. Thank you. So now, we will move to our next item. Middle housing in Wilsonville project with Dan Polly.
Good evening, Dan Polly, Planning Manager. Give me a moment to...
You need some IT assistance?
Nope, got it. All right. So, here again to talk about middle housing. Appreciate your continued engagement in this topic, as well as a lot of kudos to the Planning Commission, who have had even more work sessions than you have, and much longer work sessions. They've done some great work and really appreciate their input as we've worked through a lot of these questions. So, the topics for discussion tonight is some infrastructure analyses that we've done, also bringing forward a second package of code and plan updates. Previously, you reviewed one package, and this is the second package. And it really focuses on design standards, which design standards are one of these category three things that we've talked about previously. They are really an area where there's some local discretion, where the previous work session really focused on things that were really, the state telling you, "You have to do it this way." The design standards, where there are some strong state guidelines on a lot of them, but also a significant level of local discretion that we'll work through. And also, because they interrelate with Frog Pond to some extent, we waited to talk about all of the Frog Pond code and how that'll work to this work session as well. So going forward, there'll be one, there'll be two additional work sessions that are planned with the council in August. We'll talk about some additional updates, particularly about parking, which is an important topic, when we talk about changing the amount of housing in a neighborhood. And then, September, we'll come back to just revisit everything, kind of a holistic wrap-up, answer additional questions and updates prior to a public hearing for the council anticipated So wanted to, if we go back a few months, these are the desired project outcomes that we've reviewed with the council, and we continue to keep our focus on as we work through this project. Wanted to note that this is the first work session since the adoption of the new council goals. And so, some of these are reflective of the old council goals, such as the parking congestion, and they're still valid. We're still moving forward on those, but also want to acknowledge the new council goal about homeownership opportunities is still, is also very much a part of what we're working on and a focus. So with that, let's jump into the infrastructure analysis. And I mean, there's a lot of, as there always is, there's a lot of detail on the infrastructure analysis that we won't go into. And as with all of this, and again, I appreciate the conversations I've been able to have with many of you, with your questions and concerns. And that invitation, of course, is still out there. Happy to have those conversations, one-on-one or as a group, to discuss this in more detail. The infrastructure analysis or any component of this. So these analyses, what we really did is work with our consultants that we know that know our systems best, systems including our street system, our water system and our sanitary sewer systems. We worked with each of these consultants that know our systems to identify any potential areas of concern, was really the scope of this, to run some tests to say, if we add additional units here and there, what is, what is, what may we need to be concerned about? And in that, as you see numbers here, as just, or if the public reviews the numbers in these analyses, it's important to note that these aren't numbers that we realistically anticipate will happen. They are by design high to test the system from an infrastructure standpoint, which is a good practice, to know that, you know, we're not going to be surprised that our infrastructure isn't adequate. So, and to summarize really what the results were, it's helpful to look at existing neighborhoods. And on these existing neighborhoods, we really focus in areas where we anticipate a higher potential, where there's not existing HOAs that we would anticipate would restrict middle And really, the finding overall is that the middle housing infill can be accommodated in these areas. This wasn't surprising. Even prior to middle housing, we've always anticipated, for infrastructure planning purposes, the potential for infill in these areas, because there is land, there are lots that could be divided, things like that. So there's already some assumption of potential additional housing in these neighborhoods. So adding a bit more, surprisingly, especially with our strong history of proactive infrastructure planning, wasn't really a surprise that not a lot of concerns here. We did look at future neighborhoods, as well as particularly the Frog Pond area. And really, the recommendation from the analyses there is to do additional study regarding Frog Pond and Elxton Urban Reserve. And that's already scoped. That's part of the Frog Pond East and South master planning process that we're planning. One question that's come up is how is existing Frog Pond West really incorporated into that and any additional capacity that is allowed there? It really essentially takes away from the, what would have otherwise been available for East and South. And so, really, the starting place then for East and South is some less capacity. So then, we start there as we do the analysis for East and South. So, look forward to seeing that and really looking at the infrastructure out there. However, we have enough runway here that we can really plan the infrastructure to be able to accommodate what we need to out here. The analysis, the initial look for what we, for these purposes, calling the Graham's Ferry in Wilsonville Southwest, urban reserves looks okay. So without any, I can go back to that last slide, but any questions or comments, feedback regarding the infrastructure analyses before we get into some of the code standards?
So just to clarify, in doing this infrastructure study so far, you've looked at the current build-out, and you have yet to begin understudying the future master plan for East and South. And so, you found that we do have capacity to build the streets and infrastructure to support the potential housing?
Correct. Particularly for Frog Pond West, essentially, we were already planning capacity for East and South to some level in our infrastructure planning, so it just uses up some of that capacity.
Thank you.
Anything else on infrastructure?
So, oh, sorry. You go ahead. So are we, did you say, is Graham's Ferry then is queued up after Frog Pond? Is that right?
I mean, for these purposes, I mean, we're looking just for infrastructure planning purposes at a pretty long time horizon.
Yeah, right, right.
You know, there's no time where we expect Graham, these urban reserves to come in. But there's the potential, and we should be planning infrastructure accordingly.
And Wilsonville Southwest would be, at least as near as we can predict, would be behind Graham's Ferry. Is that correct? Most likely.
We haven't really done that much predicting on it.
Because that's getting out there always now.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Councilor Russell Hockenbaum.
Thank you. I had a question about the water infrastructure analysis. And I appreciate that, you know, you had copies of the actual analysis so we could go through and look at the details, but also the summary from these different consultants. On the water one, there's a series of maps, and the measurement of the PSI, or the different kind of existing build-out versus House Bill 2001 build-out map and the comparison, and looking at, does this change things in, you know, all of the different graphical areas across the city? And looking at it, a lot of those dots are in the blue, the dark blue range, right? There's, things are definitely looking to be in the cool colors on the maps. However, is there a specific threshold that we should be aware of, that, you know, everything up to the orange dot, or the red dot, for instance, is what would be recommended? You can see, I suppose, in the summary statements that, you know, that pressures are essentially unchanged. And that's kind of a repeated statement in multiple areas across the city. But just for our own understanding of some of this material that we have and the data that we have, do we have, are we just trying to avoid the red dots, or?
That's my understanding.
What are we going towards? Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have additional, and I'm happy to follow up with you on that.
Is this about fire flow?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, there is a minimum where, you know, TVFNR would come in and say, if we had a development application, then that might be a little dicey until you can improve the water pressure in those lines.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't see anything in the report that would suggest that that's an issue.
Right, because you see the repeated statement essentially unchanged, but I just wanted to make sure that essentially unchanged, that we're in a good spot to essentially unchange.
Especially on fire flow, because, I mean, the fire flow required for, you know, structure of the same sizes.
Yes, okay.
So...
And there is kind of a minimum fire flow or water pressure, even for residential line.
Right.
You wouldn't want to go below that.
Right, because then you have bad water pressure in your home or whatever.
Nobody wants a shower.
Exactly, exactly. No, I did appreciate the detail, because I think these infrastructure analysis, I think that's a really important piece to this. So thanks for including that. Okay?
So let's move into design standards. So this is important. I mean, design standards are really a critical component of this. When we talk about the focus of this project is preserving the look and fill of Wilsonville that the community values, as these design standards really play an important role and are an important component of this project. So, in short, the state really gives some options of how, of how cities can, and the extent to which cities can enact design standards. The basic is, essentially, the state created a model code, which is essentially a safe space, that if cities adopt this, it's okay, even though some of the regulations from middle housing in the model code would be different from single-family. The model code really goes type by type for duplex, triplex, quadplex. Townhouses have different standards. But that's been vetted by the state as reasonable, and all state, various stakeholders from around the state have been involved, and so it's really a safe place to adopt those. The other consideration is, kind of a big concept with House Bill 2001, is that regulations and processes that apply to single-family should also apply to middle housing. So in that sense, it also allows that if you apply the regulations to single-family, you can also apply those same regulations to middle housing. So with those kind of options in mind, at this point, the recommended compliance options overall for design standards is, we have a number of neighborhoods that a lot of work has been put into creating very detailed and a lot of community conversation around design standards. And these are particularly Vilwa, Frog Pond and Old Town. And with that theme of respecting past planning processes, is that we wanted to incorporate those design standards. So really, for those neighborhoods, middle housing has to meet the same design standards. So the same architectural design standards. And this builds on that concept that also middle housing is intended to be primarily in the same kind of envelope, if you will, or building envelope, as a single-family could be, but there's just additional units within that envelope. For other areas, the state model code makes sense, as it does really present some kind of, some sensical regulations that are specific to nuances that present themselves with different housing types. And we've reviewed those. We feel they're consistent with what Wilsonville is trying to do. They are also, what's nice, is they're consistent with kind of the type of regulation that we instituted for Frog Pond. You know, they regulate the same sort of things, such as garages and garage size and amount of windows, articulation of building facades. Very similar type of standards, but adapted for different, for different types of middle housing. Also, as we look through it, we felt, and the Planning Commission's kind of supported, has supported this concept of some basic design standards to, for both single-family and middle housing citywide, to help with that consistent look and fill with different housing types and... for both single-family and middle housing citywide, to help with that consistent look and feel with different housing types integrated into a neighborhood. And so, these design standards applying to all single-family and middle housing citywide, I did want to highlight those. So, one is house plan variety. This probably sounds familiar to council, or especially those who have been on DRB are familiar with what we call rules of adjacency in Vilbois, as well as we have house plan variety rules for Frog Pond. And so, we've kind of built upon that. Kind of the idea is that adjacent or opposite structures must, you know, need to vary somehow. These differ from Frog Pond and Vilbois in the sense that we needed to make them more clear and objective. So, really, we had some good discussion at Planning Commission about this. That really, we didn't want them to be so expansive that it increased cost. But we did find through surveys and different things that there is a desire to have some variation, even if it's just color of building or slight change of material, that it does make a big difference in terms of the look and feel of a neighborhood. So, those are rules about, there's really three options. You can either have a different color, which our architectural consultants really helped us define what is a threshold of what color of oatmeal is really a different color of oatmeal, as well as what percentage of material needs to be different, or different architectural features. Another important component, we studied different structures that are middle housing, and what really sticks out as something that, from visual preference surveys that people like and don't like, is where it really looks like a unified structure in the sense of architecture, well, there's still articulation in it. There's consistency of material and style across a building, so it doesn't just look like two completely different houses that are connected. So, not mixing architectural styles in the same structure is another requirement that is being recommended. A key component of these design standards is articulation and the use of different architectural features on public facades of buildings. And there's some specific standards. So, the basic standard is that you need to have some sort of articulation every 30 feet. This could be the variation of a roof line, offsets in the building, balconies, porches, things like that. And this really also was used to support this concept that we've heard from the public input of encouraging a single-family-like design. So, a couple of those concepts is, first of all, requiring a variety of these articulation features. So, that really supports having a symmetry or asymmetry of the design that's more typical of single-family, rather than having like, you know, three balconies in a row that really look like a row house. Having some variety in that creates that symmetry or asymmetry that makes it look more like a unified structure, rather than three structures just put together. The other one is that is giving an option for designers to have a larger feature that unifies two units, to have it more look, to have that structure look more unified, even though it may have multiple units in it. And that certainly reflects feedback we got in our visual preference survey. So, that is what I had to share briefly. As you know, there's much more in your packet about it, but wanted to pause, see if there's any questions or comments, feedback you'd like the project team to take on these design standards.
As you've been working with the feedback on the visual design standards and what appeals to people, have you also been interfacing with builders on how that works for them?
Yes, we've received comments, and certainly, especially as we looked at this final kind of articulation, and we've received some additional comments that we're reviewing and will continue to integrate as appropriate. But oftentimes, when you're building a new regulation, the best way to do it is go out and see what's out there, what's happening. You want to build regulations that make sense, that kind of match what the developers are already doing. So, certainly, really, especially these standards around the variety of articulation features, and was really done from surveying what's out there today. What do single-family homes look like today? What do even middle housing structures look like today? And particularly, like, looking at places such as Lake Oswego's First Edition, which has a variety of middle housing in it, some of which fit into the neighborhood better than others, and kind of looking at what is it about those that fit in? And certainly, one of the desired outcomes is to have standards that are usable by the development community, that don't add undue cost. An example of an area where we really consider that as well is the requirements for a variety of designs of adjacent homes. That we really tried to define that, give a number of venues how to do that, that won't add costs, but also meet, you know, meet the intent. So.
Thank you. Counselor Lee.
Yes, in looking at this example you have here, and I realize it's just an example, that strikes me as something that wouldn't be allowed in Vilbois. Am I wrong on that? Because there is no, there really is no porch, and there's no presence in the front of the house. So, you have no presence on the street with a design like this. And Vilbois, I think, has demonstrated how successful that is for the neighborhood as a whole to have so much living going on on the porches. And because a lot of them have garages in the back, their great room also faces out to the street. So, you have a lot of eyes on the street in Vilbois and a lot more interaction, it would seem to me. Whereas in my neighborhood, Park at Maryfield, nobody's eyes are on the street but mine. I mean, because I live in an old, old house. And so, my kitchen looks out at the street. No one else's kitchen looks at the street. It looks in the backyard. And pretty much, all the other houses in Park at Maryfield, what faces the street is the garage and the formal living room that no one goes in. So, there are very few eyes on the street in Park at Maryfield. So, I'm just saying, besides the architectural thing, I know there are a lot of, you know, neighborhood values and things that are packed in to a design. And of course, Charbonneau is entirely different, that plan where the eyes are on the golf course, in the townhouses. The house opens to the, the house views out to the golf course, not to the garage side. But, anyway. I don't know what my point is.
Are you asking if this is an actual design, or is it just showing the roof line?
Yeah, if we're just talking about the roof line, I'm hoping there are other things involved in this. And maybe this is, this reminds me of Colorado or somewhere like that, Ski Lodge. But, anyway, that if this, if these were standards that would apply citywide, it doesn't seem like this would work in, or would be allowed, like I said, in Vilbois especially, but.
Yeah, and when it comes to Frog Pond and Vilbois, there are certain components, first of all, of particularly Vilbois, that would, would, would... When I say "citywide," it's kind of referring citywide besides Vilbois, so.
That's the exception.
Vilbois is an exception, and the rules that apply in Vilbois today will continue to apply.
Charbonneau is too. You didn't mention Charbonneau.
Yeah, and Charbonneau, I mean, to the extent there'd be redevelopment in Charbonneau.
Yeah.
Then these rules would apply. And kind of the eyes on the street as well, this present, the content tonight really focuses on like the building, the structural design, the architectural elements. During the next work session, there will be more of a focus on like driveway design and placement and width and parking design, which is also an important component of it. But for kind of amount to digest at once, we divided that up a bit. But that is an important component, and whether it's alley or front-loaded, and what are the different considerations there.
I think it's attractive. I'm not saying this isn't attractive, but those other elements, values of, that we worked so hard to get into Vilbois, the front facing are missing.
Yeah, so, yeah, the Vilbois, and it's kind of a mix of, you know, but we'll be clear in the standards, what applies citywide versus what is superseded by Vilbois or Frog Pond regulations. And that, in the final version, that'll be clear. Other things on design standards?
I guess I have a quick question. I know I brought this up in the past, and I might get told this isn't an option. If we're mandating or regulating design standards, is that only the exterior of the home? Is there any way to suggest to help promote parking in their actual garage, is a certain level of storage within the home or in the garage within the design standard? Because if we want people to not, to use their parking as a parking space, that they often becomes a use for storage, because often homes don't have enough storage now. So, I don't know if that's part of design standards.
So, that is part of the design standards, and as we talk about parking, we have some considerations like that. Just a quick example to not go down this rabbit hole.
Yeah.
We will talk about it next work session as well, is, for example, having a requirement that there is a designated space for your trash containers, so it's not in the parking spot in a garage. So, we have introduced some language like that, because the idea around parking is, if we're only allowed to require one space, we want to make it count. And so, there is a focus in that, in the updated regulations, which we'll talk about more at the next work session as well. Thank you.
I have a question.
Let's go ahead.
Excuse me.
All right.
Counselor Linville, thank you. As I look at the attachment and, Attachment 1, and all of the specifics that are listed in that document, obviously, we're not going over all of those specifics. And so, how will the council deal with those? I mean, will we, will we look at them at a different time? Will there be comment at a different time? How far, I mean, are these kind of, this section, this is how it is, and we will not talk about them again?
Certainly, I mean, happy to sit down with you, and certainly, in a half an hour, there's a lot of detail that we're not going to be able to get to in the time that we have to discuss it in a work session. So, happy to talk or set up sessions to discuss when there's more time. Happy to still take comments. I mean, it's not set in stone yet by any means. So, I mean, new information, new comments, still, from the public or council or Planning Commission, still have an impact on this. So, it's still a living document. It's going through revisions to, so, happy to talk about it more, because there is a lot of detail. But in the nature of this, you know, we're at a fairly high level in this discussion in the few minutes we have.
And then, so as we get farther down the line, what's the timeline for adoption?
So, again, we'll have, so we'll talk more about parking and some of the kind of driveway design next, in August. September, we'll have another work session where we kind of bring the whole package back together to revisit kind of what's changed and answer any outstanding questions. And then, Planning Commission's scheduled for a public hearing in September, and council in October.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one more question on that. So, in setting up a group session to spend a couple of hours going over something like this in detail, being an education session, can we have more than two?
I would just do one.
One person?
Yeah.
One person at a time?
Yes.
Okay. He mentioned groups, so I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I would just do individually.
Yeah.
So, to schedule that, counselors can just call Dan and set that up.
Yep, and happy, happy to do that.
And also, you can forward questions via email, and we would share the response with the entire council. If you don't feel like you want to sit down for two hours with staff, I'm not sure Dan would be disappointed. But if you don't want to do that, and you just have some targeted, specific questions, you can just email them, and we'll make sure that you get answers.
That's just, the point is, let's have the communication, and I know we can't talk about all the details in the limited time we have.
Thank you.
I think some important details, though, are, that are very much on the community's mind, due around Frog Pond, because it is an area of the city that is changing most rapidly, and so, wanted to kind of take a few remaining minutes to focus on that. And let me just briefly kind of go back on where we've talked about this, because we have had, both at the Planning Commission, council levels, a fair amount of conversation around Frog Pond and how these state mandates and everything that's changed over the last few years affects Frog Pond. So, the basic notion that we're building on is if we don't do something to increase the density from six and a half to eight units per acre, then it defaults to a greater density with limited local control based on kind of the state default. And what the commission and council has given us feedback prior, since this is about middle housing, as we need to increase that from six and a half to eight units per acre, focusing on middle housing. And in hindsight, I mean, there was a focus on middle housing, but also, that does really allow, rather than increasing sizes of lots to put in more single-family homes or something, it does really allow us to keep lot sizes and the overall design and layout consistent with the master plan. And I'll get into a bit more detail on how that functions under the current recommendations. So, Frog Pond, as more background, since 2017, again, there in 2017, it was envisioned as primarily a single-family homes with a few duplexes. So, attached single-family up to two units, and duplexes have been allowed throughout Frog Pond West, but are subject to density limitations. And there is, in the small lot sub-districts, there is a requirement that there's 10%. So, there's a handful that have been built out there. Something else to note about Frog Pond is about half of it has been annexed and is under development, or has been developed. What I'd update the council on is, in the last few months even, so last week, we got an additional subdivision, sub-middle, which is highlighted in red on this slide. And then, we've had what we call pre-application meetings on what's highlighted in orange. What the pre-application meetings really indicate is that the developers actively working on getting a sub-middle package together. And so, we'd submit, anticipate these, this land highlighted in orange to be submitted under current regulations before council adopts any changes.
Can you point out where that is? You said red and orange. Can you just like hover on the map so we?
Yeah, so, I should use my-
Is it?
I think it's tan. Tan and-
No, it's not tan.
Is it in the middle there?
Yeah, kind of the tan, the kind of the tan T-type outline like this. Yeah, kind of this hammer-type T. Then, the red is here, up here in the corner along Stafford Road.
Okay.
And then, the darker here is areas that are annexed and developed or under development currently.
So, just, may I ask a question, Your Honor? So, just so I understand, what looks like a hammer is in tan, and then, the bottom part is in what I would consider orange, or what you're referencing is orange. But subdivision R7, and portions of, or sub-districts are seven, and portions, sorry, my vision is really not very good.
It's hard to see.
And subdivision R5, is it?
Yes.
Those also included in?
Yeah, so let me maybe highlight the areas that, at this point, we- Yeah, so let me maybe highlight the areas that at this point, we'd anticipate the standards to actually apply to.
Okay.
So it'd be kind of this northwest portion here, as well as a small portion over at the corner of Frog Pond Lane and Stafford Road. So based on what we know today, that would be kind of anticipation of where any updated Frog Pond West standards would actually apply.
Is that the majority of Frog Pond West?
That's about a quarter of Frog Pond West. So no, about half is annexed currently.
Okay.
And, you know, roughly speaking, about another quarter may come in prior to regulations becoming under effect. So and that's, that's significant to note as we talk about how we approach Frog Pond So one portion that we've talked about a lot, and before I go into kind of the, a couple of quick details of how it functions, is we, there's been a lot of discussion about beyond allowing, which is required by the state of allowing additional units, is actually requiring additional units. This goes back to February. We got feedback from developers as they plan on kind of just moving forward with what their current plans were. And there was concern that, you know, based on this concept that the council, Planning Commission Understood Council of trying to create additional ownership opportunities that are at a lower price point, is okay, if we're, maybe we should require a few, it's still consistent, that 10% level that is still consistent with the Frog Pond master plan. And so that was entertained. However, as we look at this now, due to the minimal, due to the amount of development that has or will come in, we're finding that really that we're only likely looking at a net increase of eight more units through such a requirement.
And so the additional 10% is, in this Frog Pond West, is only eight, not 30 units?
Yeah, because of the, yeah, go ahead.
It's only going to be applicable to what would be in effect at the time that the development came to the city. So what he's saying is about 75% of it's going to already be spoken for.
Yeah.
So your ability to increase the net amount of units is going to be limited to a small portion of Frog Pond West.
So you're talking about 15 middle housing units, which would, would replace seven single-family units for a net increase of units of like eight. So it's, so keeping that in mind, really kind of from a staff's project team standpoint, if the intent is to have an impact of creating more housing options, it's really a minimal impact. And so it's becoming really where we have, part of our desired outcome is to have usable and impactful standards. And we're finding that based on the pace of development, that such a standard probably won't actually be that impactful. And so really, the question is, should we continue to pursue it at all based on it being usable and meaningful? And if not, what other ideas the council may have to encourage affordable home ownership opportunities in Frog Pond West?
To be clear, the policy statement that you just made is applicable to Frog Pond West. It would be a different approach for East and South.
Correct. East and South, we're going to get there. We're going to have lots of conversations about that over the next 18 months, so.
And to confirm the date when the new standards would go in effect, is that November 18th?
We're, if everything go, I mean, obviously, that's not set in stone. If we end up continuing hearings and things, it'd be later. But if it ends up being adopted on the schedule that is currently sketched out, it would come into effect in November.
That's if everything goes according to plan from a public hearing standpoint. Is it possible to have Frog Pond West be exempt and just from the additional 10% since it's already so far built out and just say Frog Pond West, do we just meet House Bill 2001 and then the rest of the city? You can't parse out the city. Is that not allowed? It would be applicable to any land that came in after, right?
Yeah, and so that whole 10% requirement concept is only for Frog Pond West anyway. That's the only area we were entertaining it.
Okay.
So that's really, if it has minimal impact, the question is, is it going? Moving forward with.
And you realize why that is?
Yeah, I do, yes.
Okay.
Okay. So I mean.
We already have a master plan.
Right.
And the other two, we do not yet have master plans. And, and there's also a difference in, it's really because certain land has not yet been brought into development in Frog Pond West, and there is an existing master plan.
Correct.
So your question.
Question is, do you want to invest more staff time in discussion?
Well, I think you asked us, is we had another idea.
And you don't have to give it now, but I just want to put that idea out.
Maybe during your one-on-one meetings, if you have them, if you have some ideas.
I forgot to bring my drafting table tonight.
So, but isn't, and, you know, I put that question out there as we've discussed it as staff, is because, I mean, these affordable home ownership opportunities we've heard from the council is very important.
It is.
And, you know, what else should be on the table as we discuss that? And we want to be mindful of that council goal as we continue to refine and try to make these code changes meaningful, so.
Well, I met a number of home builders at the Home Builders Golf Tournament and heard about a lot of different, a lot of enthusiasm for middle housing ideas, like the ones that you discussed that fit in with, you know, a mix of housing to give people a variety of options. And I heard there's a lot of enthusiasm for that. I'm looking forward to seeing more of that because that's about the only way to, to, and what I like about what I heard tonight when we talked about the design standards is we're maintaining the look and feel of the neighborhoods, quality neighborhoods. Of course, they will have streets, they will have streetlights, they will have sidewalks, and we will talk more about the parking and all of those standards. But in this particular case, because of the way apparently building has already started and the pace of building, the pace of development has moved pretty fast. And so it's moving quickly as these things are being finished. And so is that really what's brought us to the place that there are less, you know, about half or so of the houses that we thought would be possible?
Correct. And I do want to mention, I forgot what I was going to mention, but that happens sometimes.
Can I ask, so if we didn't pursue this any further, what is the, what would happen if a builder towards the back end? My experience with these things is, is that it's the back end, it's the finishing deal at Charbonneau and at Villebois where things start changing quite a bit at the back end. So if, if a builder came forward who was, you know, some years down the road and said, but we, but I want to meet the middle housing thing, could they press forward with that? Could they, could they make that happen because of this house bill?
Absolutely, because that is what the state requires us to allow.
We have to allow.
And you triggered what I forgot to say. Thank you. Is, I mean, I don't have a lot of detail to share because it's pretty preliminary. I mean, they haven't done pre-application meetings, but I have had conversations with property owners that are entertaining the idea, looking at the feasibility of idea, of the idea of doing middle housing on their property in Frog Pond West. Don't know, you know, so that does increase the likelihood that someone might do it out there. But, you know, that is required to be allowed, and we may end up seeing it. That will be seen as, as, you know, as, as that property owner makes decisions going forward.
Could that include mother-in-law attachments or small properties? Is that what that is? That's allowed, right? But is that under middle housing, like that's somebody, something could do?
A little differently. I mean, it's interrelated and a lot of kind of the ideas and concepts around it come together and support some of the same goals, but accessory dwelling units are already allowed and were required to be allowed by a separate house bill a number of years ago.
Have any of those built?
We have, I think about, we've actually seen a number additional this year. So I think we're around 10 to a dozen now.
And I presume we will allow father-in-law options as well.
I think that's going to require a separate.
Those father-in-laws.
ADUs are limited to 800 square feet, so.
Okay.
So that's.
That's like a.
Pretty little.
Council President Ockerbell. Thank you. Earlier in your presentation, you made a comment about, I think, when we were looking at the design standards and then segueing into the Frog Pond West. The design standards, page 36 of our packet, I think, it's talking about requests is compatible with existing surrounding development in terms of placement of buildings, scale of buildings, architectural design, right? So we have this consistent look and feel of a neighborhood. And you made a comment about that some of these middle housing design standards and plans, it's using larger lot sizes that is in, in the Frog Pond West area versus, I think you said something about versus having smaller lots, you know, if things go in a different direction. Can you rearticulate that and explain those different scenarios, I guess?
So the requirement in terms of Frog Pond West is whether to, is to increase density. The state didn't really say how, per se.
Right.
So one of the options was to just reopen kind of the lot size and kind of the design of the different sub-districts.
Which would be smaller lots.
To, to increase, you know, to convert, you know, the medium lots or larger lots to small lots would be one way to meet that, which would take, would be a much more involved kind of relook at the design of Frog Pond West, where, and you can see it on this page, is really what we're changing is making it based on the minimum number of lots or the maximum number of lots. So you're keeping the number of lots and the lot layout the same, and the building envelope's the same, it's just more flexibility of what can be done inside that building envelope in terms of number of units.
But maintaining the consistency of the look of dwelling.
And while maintaining the look.
Oh, okay.
You know, so the structure, you know, maybe two, 2,000 square foot homes rather than, you know, 4,000 square foot home.
So we'll have a lot more time to discuss these issues. But we do have one more item.
Okay, so I suggest that, so we will think about this and exchange ideas with Mr. Polly and talk about it at our next meeting. Thank you.
Perfect.
So now, thank you, Mr. Polly. We will move to the subject of the ice storm remediation. After action. Thank you.
Good evening. Martin Montalvo, Public Works Operations Manager. Give me just a moment here. Okay, so, good evening, Martin Montalvo, Operations Manager. Haven't seen you guys in a while, so this may seem a little overdue. Ice storm occurred over the Valentine's Day weekend. I've been gone for the last 100 days, just got back a few weeks ago. Yep. So just got back to first day back dealing with the water leak at City Hall, so apologize for the delay. So we're going to give you an overview of the after-action report that we had put together last March for the ice storm. The after-action is a standard procedure that we do after all emergency operations to kind of give us an idea of what we did well, what we didn't do well, and where can we improve. So just to give you a little background, like I said, ice storm hit over the Valentine's Day weekend. We had about three days of cold weather leading up to about two days of just sheer ice. Overall, there was an inch to an inch and a half of ice accumulation within the Portland metro region, and the city of Wilsonville was near the epicenter of the actual ice event. So we got hit pretty hard. That's all based on information from the National Weather Service. This will give you some ideas of what we faced on the morning of the ice storm when we started getting our operations back into, back into operations. We walked outside of the Public Works facility, and this is what it looked like outside of Public Works. We were dealing with ice, we were dealing with snow, we were dealing with equipment that had been damaged overnight as a result of the ice. That is a squad car and one of our Public Works vehicles that were damaged during the ice storm. Basically took them out of operations for quite a few days. Challenges we were dealing with, so it's a prolonged event, difficulties with prolonged event, you got limited staff and equipment. It was just tough just getting staff in, tough getting equipment moving. You're working under adverse conditions. So as the ice was coming in, there was a point where we basically told everyone, hunker down. Return back to base if you're out in the field, and we're going to stay in the building until it's safe for you guys to roll back out. We took protective measures, which basically meant we're not cutting any wood. If something goes down, we put cones out in the street, and that's all we can do. A gallon of water weighs 8.8 pounds, and a chunk of ice is quite a few pounds or gallons of water. So it was just too much risk associated with it. Other challenges that we were facing is unclear lines of responsibility for the debris. So we, the city, have a debris management plan. We knew what our responsibilities were. Conveying that to the community was a challenge. You know, we were having electrical power issues, communication issues, trying to tell everybody, hey, this is what the city's responsible for, this is what you're responsible for, became a challenge for us. So, and then defining our rules of engagement. So for us telling our guys, so we had about 25 Public Works and Park staff, that we said, we're going to go out and we're going to deal with this debris. Just defining the rules of engagement for them was difficult at times, especially when you're out picking up debris and a community member asks you for help and you have to try and remain on mission and still be compassionate and do some level of customer service. And then the other big challenge is this was basically one of the largest debris generating events that we've had in the Portland metro region. So we, just the city of Wilsonville, generated over 24,000 cubic yards. So for those of you that volunteered at the debris site, and thank you very much for doing that, you saw what we were dealing with. You saw the amount of material. For scalability, once that's all chopped up into mulch, it's basically a football field with six feet of mulch on top of it. And then the other massive debris issue was addressing the needs of the city versus the needs of private property owners. So I think as a community and as an organization, we came up with a very reasonable compromise that the city would facilitate the disposal of debris if you can bring it to us. Incidentally, we were the first to put that into place, and we became the model for all of the other cities in the area. So we were kind of leading the pack with addressing our debris from this event. All right, so one of the first things that we did is, once it was safe to put people back out on the street, is we initiated an initial damage assessment. And our debris management plan says we focus on the east-to-west arterials and collectors. So ODOT has responsibility to I-5. I-5 did not have a lot of debris, so that gave us a north-to-south route. Our teams were assigned routes moving on all of the east-to-west connectors, so Wilsonville Road, Beckman, Alexander. Once we got those cleared and we gauged the level of damage, then we started moving into other areas. So to give you an idea of what I mean by rules of engagement, so as the guys were going out every morning, we'd say, so this is the limits of what you have to focus on. This is Canyon Creek, just south of, oh, I can't remember where it is. This is basically Canyon Creek Road. The instructions to the crew was regardless of where the tree emanated from, so it's private property on the right-hand side over here, anything that crosses over the sidewalk, from sidewalk on one side of the street to the sidewalk on the other side of the street, you cut it, chip it, and get it out of the way. Public safety is our primary concern in reopening the travel corridors. Anything that was outside of that sidewalk, regardless of where it emanated from or who owned it, stayed there until we had more resources to come back to it. So this gives you a good idea of what the crews were doing when the ice storm hit, and we were taking just preventative measures, put out cones. Once it was safe enough, then we came in with crews and started cutting it up to clear it out to, on the limits of the city's responsibility. So the west debris site, as I mentioned earlier, many of you were able to come out there. We've got some really interesting drone footage. We've provided all of this to FEMA. We've provided all of this to FEMA. This gives you an overview of the site as it was just reaching maximum capacity, and then another overview of what it looked like after we were able to chip all the material up. So the material was trucked away by a private trucking company, and we were actually able to sell it for a very small profit. There are a lot of communities that are still dealing, there's two off the top of my head that still have their debris piles in their parks and are trying to determine what they're going to do with it for the eventual outcome. All right, so some of the best practices that we put into place. And the benefit of being in complete disaster mode for the last 18 months is we really kind of have this dialed in. So we did the emergency declaration. The assistant city manager declared it at the time, and then we had council ratified at the next council meeting, gave us our emergency authorizations that we needed to do, protective measures, encroach on private property, and emergency purchasing. We had a debris management plan. The county, Clackamas County, and most of the cities in Clackamas County five years ago put together debris management plans that gave you a playbook on how to deal with high debris generating event. And we read it, we followed it, and it worked out well for us. The other thing that we did is we leveraged all of our existing systems. So we use our accounting practices in the CIP program saying, you know, Keith, I need a pot of money. Give me a CIP number that I can put all those expenses to, and then we can track it for FEMA purposes. Makes it, makes it very clear-cut for the accountants on the backend and for the FEMA auditors that have been coming through here and looking at all of our paperwork. We tracked all of the costs, both force account, contractors, equipment and materials through our existing asset management system. Our FEMA documentation has been very good. We've finished, I think we've got two more meetings left with FEMA, one next week, and then one shortly after that, and our complete package will be done. I'll go into more about that in a moment. So some of the other things that played out for us is have a plan, know your plan. We have multiple plans for our emergency operations. Both our natural hazard mitigation and our debris management plan were all implemented in our response. So when city management and council was asking, hey, what are we doing? We were able to give you answers very quickly and give you a game plan of how we're moving through the community to address this because we'd already tabletop it years ago. So example of cost tracking, this is the asset management system. So every person in Public Works and now almost every person in the city, because we've had to tie them into various work orders, both for COVID and for the ice storm and the forest fire and the water leak, we have them all in our asset management system. So we track their time, we track the equipment that they use down to a chainsaw, down to, you know, power tools, the trucks, everything is basically tracked in there, and we're able to account for that and get restitution from the federal government for all its use. What that leads to is a package we submitted to FEMA several weeks ago, city expenses in total of $713,000. Right now, the standard FEMA rule is they cover 75, you're supposed to cover 25. First of all, we're, I'm very proud, we're submitting for 100% of all of our eligible expenses. So by that, I mean if there was a, there was a penny at the bottom of that barrel, we scraped up every penny that we were eligible for. And then we got into several pilot programs with FEMA that allows us to get more than the 75% that they typically do. So when you roll it all in, we're going to get about 89% of our actual cost back, but that's for every available penny that we were able to account for. Incidentally, we've met with two other agencies that looked at our package, and they said, how did you do that? Can you please give us a few tips? So we've been helping out some of our partners in the region with, oh, you didn't include this, you didn't include that. So some of the lessons learned, and this is directly from comments that were garnered during the after-action with staff and with the EOC team, is messaging, consistent messaging both from your starting, from your PIO, moving through the operation staff into the community. And then keep it consistent. So one message, everybody's singing the same song. Be careful of opportunistic individuals. And this is something we made to the partners. Once we said, hey, the city of Wilsonville will help you with your debris, realizing it is the city of Wilsonville taxpayers that will bear the brunt of this. We had quite a few people showing up with, yeah, you know, I live in Wilsonville sorta, and we had to try and politely encourage them to seek alternate means of disposing of their material. And then other things we learned are relationships are key, both at the county level with the emergency management group over there, with our fire and police, first responders, our vendors and contractors. So the one thing that everyone in the region was, was doing was competing for very limited resources. And the contracts and the relationships that we have with vendors that rent us equipment or provide us supplies were things that we were able to leverage to get us supplies that others were not able to get. We borrowed stuff from other people, other people borrowed stuff from us. So everyone was leveraging those relationships. And then the community liaisons was a great resource, particularly with Charbonneau and working with the community members down there. And then the last thing I'll go into is we go into the after-action report, is when we do these after actions, we tell everyone, we celebrate the successes and we recognize those that excelled. But failures are an organizational failure. So don't start throwing daggers at any one individual person because at any point, the daggers could come your way. So we met as a group with operations group, and we celebrated our successes, and we figured out what do we need to improve upon. We did the same thing with the EOC staff because while they're all working together, to some extent, their operations are different. So some of the successes that we noted was a really high degree of teamwork and interdepartmental cooperation. So once the all-clear was given, we called everyone in Public Works and said, hey, if you can safely make it here, come. Same thing with parks, same thing with engineering, and just the sheer number of staff that showed up on a Saturday as you're still recovering from an ice storm was, was very impressive. So establishing the debris collection site early in the event cycle was a success that everyone noticed, everyone appreciated. The organized plan of attack for removing the debris from the right away was another success. Emergency fuel monitoring and distribution was very effective. So within the city, five different generators were running for three days for city-owned critical assets. We were fueling all of those at least twice a day, and in addition, the city extended mutual aid to an assisted living facility in Charbonneau and provided them assistance. So that we're all clear, there's federal and state regulations that say ALFs are supposed to be able to do this all on your own. You can't rely on local government, you can't rely on fire and police when there's a disaster. They are mandated to have the plans and contracts to do that. And when their plans and contracts failed, the city stood up and we said, we will help you. Okay? So celebrate that success. And then overall, cost tracking was effective, streamlined, and the existing asset management was a great resource for us. So where do we need to improve upon? So one of the things we, we picked up right away was timekeeping at the onset was disorganized, clumsy, and then as we tried to improve on it, it really didn't help that much. So the day we showed up here for the broken water pipe, first thing we did was say, everybody put your name on this piece of paper and what time you got here. So we learn from our mistakes, and we're improving on our time tracking for, when responding to unknown disasters, okay? Conflicting and internal and external communication regarding public and private responsibilities for debris management. I mentioned this earlier. Even though we meet every morning and tell everybody, these are the rules of engagement, this is how we're going to do it, the message slips here and there. While we were pushing out through social media, Bill Evans, through all of you, through community members, the message still slips, and there's a little muddiness as to what was responsibility of the city, what was the responsibility of the community. And then the last thing is, in the haste to address the issues, many staff felt that safety and maintenance was sacrificed at all, at times. So while we're trying to get out there and deal with this debris and get the community back whole, several of the staff members said, we should have waited a little bit longer before we got in a certain area, there was too much ice. The decision for that falls on me, and I will take full blame for that, but it's a lesson that we will learn, and it won't be repeated. That's my presentation. I have five minutes left, if you have any questions.
Well, thank you, Martin. That was, it was a great presentation. And in fact, just last week, I heard from one of our neighboring cities that one of their staff members had talked to you at a conference or something.
Yeah, Martin presented this.
Martin presented, and maybe he's like, wow, you guys, we just wish we'd known that. I mean, and I also heard, you know, from Dwight about working with other transportation providers, so it's just really, not only are you working with our, our citizens, neighborhood leaders, neighborhood groups, and our neighboring cities, because we're not in an isolated place all by ourselves here.
We, we definitely try to share resources and information with our, because we will ask them on occasion for something as well.
Council Linville, did you have your hand raised?
I did. Thank you. I just have to commend you and the staff on an incredible response and action to really an event that I think affected probably every area of our city, which to begin to even think about, how do you assess, how do you assess and begin to do that work? I think it's, it's just incredible. So please pass my commendation on to all of our staff as well, and I think I've done that.
Well, thank you, ma'am.
A number of times. But thank you for your leadership, and, and I think doing the assessment at the end is just a critical piece of it, and so I commend you for that. One of the things that I have a little, just questions about, which weren't really addressed much, I mean, it appears that the biggest issue in this event and the one where we really tackled it was the debris and the, and, you know, the, not infrastructure, but the natural hazards that were created as a result. And I wondered, given what had happened just recently in the heat event with, with the deaths that happened in, in some of our neighboring areas, I think we were fairly fortunate, at least, to not have that happen in our end. But that's the other side of the coin, is the, is that kind of situation. And I, and I have just concerns about a power outage and, and what, what would happen if we had a major power outage? And, I mean, I know that we did have in isolated areas, we had outage in some areas that went on for a lot longer than we would have liked. And was, is there a plan in place for addressing and dealing with that, that aspect of these emergencies, whether it is power outage and people in their homes and not able to eat or get out? And what's, what, you know, what do we do in that situation? Or the other side of it, where we have the, a heat event, where we have a same kind of vulnerable population who are sitting in their homes and don't have any relief? And I'm not asking for you to, you know, to go through the explanation of all of that, but I know that some of the other communities are saying, how did this happen where we lost all these people and they, they died in their homes because of the heat event? I think we were fortunate. We didn't have people die as a result of the cold event, but we, but we did have some, we didn't have, it appeared to me, to have an organized way to address, how do we do those, you know, whose responsibility, how do we activate that kind of a system underneath us for emergency management? And, and I think we, you know, I'd, I'd be happy to just have a one-on-one conversation at some point about that. I think we're very fortunate that we, we kind of came out of it without having a lot of, but, but I can't, I just can't say enough about what a great job the staff did in response.
Thank you, Council Linville. I was just thinking that before you answer that, maybe we could just briefly hear from Council Lehan and Council Westwood, and then you could wrap it all up.
Yeah, kind of similar, but my, I mean, I agree with everything Council Linville said, but I also wanted to ask, you said, you know, assisted living facilities and other, whatever, fragile care facilities, we have them throughout the city really, are required to have generator capacity. Who, who is the enforcer on that?
The county and the state.
The county and the state. So, so the county comes around once a year?
They're required to submit their emergency operations plans annually to the county for review and approval. There's federal regulations that says that they are supposed to have these plans, have them reviewed annually, and then exercise at least once a year as to how to proceed. It also mandates that they have to have contracts in place for emergency service support. So if they have to evacuate a facility, what, this came about after Hurricane Andrew in Florida back in the 80s. There were multiple deaths associated with assisted living facilities, and their emergency plan was, we're going to call the fire department. And it showed that you cannot rely on the emergency services that are dealing with everything else when a community fails to come and then provide this emergency transport service.
Well, it seems like one thing, I'm getting off of your thing, a follow-up ought to be, what is in that report that they do? What, you say, once a year, they're supposed to report?
So they're supposed to review their plans, submit it to the county for review, and then they have to conduct annual exercises?
So for, since we did have, I think these are really excellent points, and since we did have emergency response in our council goals.
Right.
Perhaps we could have a work session or determine a plan. I know you're working on that, on how to hear about all of these things.
Yeah, because it wasn't just, do you have a generator? They, they had inadequate generators.
I think it was a fuel supply.
Fuel issue, but, but even when they had fuel, they couldn't get the temperature of the building up to, you know, above 57 or 8 or something.
Yeah, that's a different issue that they.
That's a load issue associated with a generator. There's a lot of intangibles that you have to look at.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I mean, you know what I mean.
I'll be happy to talk offline with any one of you.
Effective generator that will do the work, so.
Thank you, Council Lehan. Council West.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I was at a barbecue in Frog Pond here in July, and when I was, I met a new neighbor there in the community who had just moved from Chicago, and somebody had told her that I was a city councilor, and so one of the first questions to me was, is the city of Wilsonville really functional? I've lived in places where the city wasn't functional. And I very proudly said, our city runs very well. And it's moments like how you presented this presentation where you were exceptional beyond the standard as a city on how to handle a disaster. And a couple of things really stood out to me is that the city effectively prioritized and triaged the situation, so they knew how to take things as they came. And you also, the city was quick to admit that to err is human. And that phrase, to err is human, comes from my healthcare background because no matter how skilled you are or how great we are and how we know things, the ability to go back, and I really appreciate to go, to be able to go back and to say, we got to debrief this, and we still can do better even though we had already exceeded these standards. I'm really proud of you guys, and I'm really proud of the city that they did that. And so I guess we're going to wrap this up. We're running out of time, so we're going to come back with like more conversations about preparedness or?
I think because we just committed to our council goals, and emergency preparedness is one of them, we will give the city manager and staff time to come up with a plan. I mean, we, we are coming back to this topic. So I hope that this gave you some good fodder for that, and thank you for the great report and the great response.
I think the big thing that we need to do for our community is to help people become prepared.
We have a lot of interest in that.
We're, we're going to be taking care of critical infrastructure. So we need the CERT teams, we need better communication. You know, there's, there's things that I learned during this last event that I need to have a liaison to me so that I can more effectively communicate with city council. So we all have things we can do better.
And all of our neighborhoods need.
And individuals need to take responsibility for themselves and, and check in on their vulnerable neighbors that they know about. So there's more education we need to do with our community, and that's going to be the thrust of the council goal.
Thank you.
That's good.
Oh, Council President Ockerball, please.
I know we're really quick on time, so if, if.
Is that okay? Two minutes.
Okay, it'll be less than two minutes. As we circle back to this, one thing that I noticed in your presentation and in the packet was the amount of fuel that was needed during it and was supplied by Smart, and I'm so grateful to all of the different organizations working together to provide that. As Smart moves to becoming more and more alternative fuel, running, you know, with all the buses, which is a great goal, and I think we all want it to move in that direction. Will we have the?
Will we have the fuel supplies in the future to, you know, that was obviously needed by both the city and external parties, so?
As we develop our new Public Works site, we will be thinking about fuel capacity.
Perfect. I just wanted to bring up that one point, because.
Hey, it's all part of our resiliency plan.
Great.
So you can't put all your eggs in a basket.
Exactly.
That's the one thing we've learned from disasters over the years.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
With that, I will adjourn the work session.
Is that right?
And can we take a, I know we.
You're the mayor, you can do whatever you want.
I am committed to getting us to start the city council meeting on time, but we had some urgent things to talk about, so we will re-adjourn at 7:15.